Just a reminder to turn your cell phones off. And hold it, you want to just give me a thumbs up when we're, when we're live? Welcome to our Tuesday night regular school board meeting of ISD 709 Duluth, Minnesota. It is 6:35 and we welcome you again. This is our regular monthly school board meeting. It is held the third Tuesday of the month. It is November 16th. And our first agenda item is the roll call by Clerk Oswald.
Member Eater, here. Member Kirby?
Here.
Member Locklear Kemp?
Here.
Chair Lofal?
Here.
I am here. Member Standholm?
I am here.
And Member Trinka's excused. Superintendent Magus is excused?
No, please, sir.
Here, and I apologize that I'm camera off. I'm tending to family matters at this time and I can explain later. Thank you.
Okay. He is here. On to you. Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Erickson?
Here.
HR Director Teresa Severn?
Yes.
Secretary Patty Paquette? And Secretary Jackie Dolan?
Here.
Student Representative Aleah Bartley?
Here.
And Student Rep from East Ella Shute is excused. We have four.
Thank you. Thanks Clerk Oswald. And right now we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag is right up there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Again, our agenda is on the back table for those that would like to. But right now I'm asking for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved?
Moved by Member Eater, seconded, we have a second of the agenda by Robert Locklear Kemp. All those in favor of approval of the agenda? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Our agenda is approved. Our number five item on our agenda is school and community recognition. And we're excited for our recognition as always. But also before we, we celebrate our community and our teacher staff member, I just want to share that November is the National Native American Heritage Month, which honors American Indians and Alaska natives. This year, our, our National American Heritage, Native American Heritage Month theme, so, so appropriate is resilient and enduring. We are native people. In 1990, President George W. Bush approved designating November as our National American Indian Heritage Month. According to the National Congress of American Indians, the month is meant to celebrate the cultures, the histories, and contributions of native people. It is also meant to educate people about native culture and the challenges native people have faced historically. Indigenous history was taught and celebrated this past Saturday in Duluth as part of our Native American Heritage Month. And if you've noticed the celebration in the news, news articles and the news on TV, it looked like an incredible celebration. The event included lectures from members of the Ojibwe community and the unveiling of a new exhibit featuring Pow Wow Regalia. Organizers said that their goal for the event was to bring people of different backgrounds together to learn. The celebration shared stories and traditions of the earliest residents of the area. So tonight it gives me great pride to have ISD 709 recognize and celebrate the many amazing staff and students who represent their Native American peoples. So it's a celebration. And now I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds to recognize our community.
Thank you. And good evening, everyone. Members of the Board, this month is my pleasure to present for recognition, Anakwad Ikwe, also known as Winona. Winona is a member of the Bad River Band of Ojibwe in Wisconsin and is an Ojibwe Emergent Teacher with the Mesabakon Emergent Program at Lowell Elementary. She also takes part in creating the Ojibwe Emergent Curriculum Program with a special focus on science. Winona is a recipient of the Duluth News Tribune 20 Under Forty Award. Congratulations. This award recognizes high achievers younger than 40 from the greater Duluth community who are successfully in their chosen field of study, role models in their careers, or leaders in the business and community. Award recipients are uplifted in the Northland community in the Duluth News Tribune. In the newspapers feature, Winona says, quote, "My friends, family, dreams, love for the Ojibwe language and culture, and my passion for learning astronomy are deeply my passion. They are an inspiration for my journey of intertwining Ojibwe, science, and teaching." Winona, you're an inspiration to us. Once again, congratulations on receiving this award and thank you for your leadership and support of Duluth students and families. Congratulations.
We are lucky to have you.
And Winona did want to have an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, so I'll introduce myself when I do that first. Buju, ninsa Gagi Giana Kodekwe Indigun, bijujundu dan minua mashke dibinginduunshaba. My name is Gagi Giana Kodekwe, but my students call me Anakwadekwe for short. And I just want to, I'm really honored to receive this recognition and the award as well. I just want to take the moment to recognize the Mesabakon Ojibwe Emergent Program and what we do for our students. I hope you'll continue to support it and honor the role that it has in reviving the language and culture for our younger generation, which is really important in reviving our language and culture for the future. So mi gretch.
Thank you. And later on, school board members, you saw that I put a handout in, by your folders there. And we're going to, at agenda item number 12, just kind of encourage us to take a look at the idea about land acknowledgement as we go forward in the new year. So we'll revisit that. So again, thank you. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Bonds. Thanks Katie Kaufman for publishing this and getting this out on social media and the attention. So thank you. Next on our agenda is agenda item number six and it's public comment. And so before we go to public comment, I'm going to ask a couple of things. Member Oswald is going to read our Duluth Public Schools. What is it called?
Tools of Civility.
Tools of Civility. I knew that.
Community Vision and Priorities for Duluth Schools. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world. The 11 Tools of Civility. This school board recognizes the 11 tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include pay attention, listen, be inclusive, don't gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, take responsibility, be honest and care for others, and show your evidence and share your reasoning.
Thank you Clerk Oswald. And then you will also then go over just some guidelines that the board has for public comment.
We're missing the green, yellow, red light. So we'll have to do that between the two of us. But it was here last month, so maybe next month it can return. Just saying. So information to know when you sign up to speak at board meetings. Persons wishing to address the school board must sign in prior to the meeting listing their name, address, and the matter on which you will speak. It is located in the back of the room behind the far back people back there. If you have any handouts for the board, please give them to the School Board Secretaries located at this lovely round table over here. And the persons addressing the board will speak in order in which they signed up. Each person addressing the board will have three minutes total. Persons addressing the board may not merge their time in order to allow one person to speak for more than three minutes. The clerk of the board, me, will start a stoplight timer if I had one. However, we will give you a 30-second warning and a wind-up time. When the red light does come on and we tell you that it's, that your time is up, the chair will gavel to signal you to stop. Persons addressing the board shall confine their comments to matters pertaining to the agenda or relevant to matters of administrative concern. In the interest of respect for each public comment speaker, please hold any commentary during the speaker's time until they are finished.
Thank you. Are we set? So this is our public comment and our first speaker is Beth McCuskey. And then after Beth on deck, I would call it, is Judith McKeever. So welcome Beth. Oh, I'm sorry, right up here. Yep. And you're gonna, you can take a seat.
All right.
Yeah, sounds like a teacher, doesn't it? Yes, it does.
That's okay. I get it. Hi, my name is Beth McCuskey and I have a couple of things that I wanted to say. Number one, sorry, Paul, I wish I could see you in person, but I'm waving. First of all, I want to congratulate and thank our four school board members that ran and won their elections. And it was a good election. And to all of you that are school board members, it's a hard job, especially these days. And I just thank you for your time and effort and willing to put yourself in a public forum like this. It's, it's important and we need you on that. But I came here to talk about some things that I have heard. So I'm addressing it to you so that hopefully one of you could give me an answer. When you go Central High School is, both of them, sold. So is it correct that you are going to be using part of the old STC for future administration? And the old historic Central where there used to be memorabilia, there's no longer space for that. Is that, we're hearing that and that things are just kind of like, here, do you want it? Do you want this historical stuff? And if that's true, that's wrong. You know, people donated that stuff and just like this is a wonderful building and East has their memories, I think it's not fair to discard that. And I would ask that somebody get back to me on what's really going on and that you couldn't find a small closet for some of the stuff to be moved to the new building. So that's being talked about and people are not happy about it. And then when we, and I've been on four of these levies. I've been working with many of you on that. And so then as, we need to address those public issues because when we go to the public to ask for their support and they're not understanding things, you will not have that support. So I would ask that those get clarified. Also, as some of you on this board know, I was a retired teacher. I retired it over 32 years in June of 19. And in the 20-plus years, I was on the negotiation team for the DFT. And I would ask that as a board and an administration that you do your best to acknowledge that the teachers and staff are having a really hard time. This is, negotiations are never easy. It's give and take, but our teachers are exhausted. Our janitorial, engineer, custodial, kitchen, everybody. I think there's what, 11 unions that are negotiating? And it's hard because I did it for 20 years with the DFT. But what I'm hearing, it's, it's not good. And so as we move forward, I ask that everybody bargaining in good faith, think of all the hard work that the teachers are doing. They're working from home at times. They're dealing with the stresses. And we all need to make sure that we're doing the best that we can with each other for goodwill. I'm done.
Good job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next is Judith McKeever and after Judith is Kristin Warman.
Good evening, Chair Lofal, Superintendent Magus, and school board members. My name is Judith McKeever. I am the chairperson for the paraprofessional bargaining. I'm here to speak to you about what I personally am seeing, what I am personally seeing and what I'm hearing about in regards to our Duluth Public Schools. I have concerns that I feel need to be shared. To begin with, we are physically and emotionally drained. I see a large amount of stress being put on people every day. It seems we are at a breaking point in the schools. Embittered and angry employees, it is growing each day. Why is COVID money spent on hiring what seems to be a large number of administrative staff when schools and classrooms are in such need? The needs are far too many to cover here. This is beyond crisis. A few examples, lack of Chromebooks, lack of support for all staff in school, and no subs for hourly workers. And I could go on with the list. Why does an individual school have to purchase masks for children with their own budget money when there are COVID monies for, or at least there were? Where are the priorities? What are we about? Administrators and money or educating our children? It seems the logical thinking, caring, and priorities have been lost in the district. School board members need to come out and spend a full day in a building to really get the feel of what is exactly going on. But yet you are rarely seen in the building. How are best for the students and staff decisions ever made when you do not know the feel and going-ons of your own buildings? It's obvious that you are having a great difficulty attracting and maintaining good employees in all areas. People in the schools feel so unappreciated, disrespected, isolated, and beyond overworked. Frustrations continue to mount. Employee unhappiness is an understatement. It's pretty hard to find good employees when unhappy and stressed-out employees of our district are out in the community. Need I say more on that reality? If you want students in this district to learn at the rate you are asking employees to achieve, you had better think long and hard about the upcoming contracts. All employees need to be treated with respect and dignity. This can start to be achieved through fair contract negotiating. Negotiating. We expect bargaining in good faith on both sides to be done. I guarantee you, you will settle nothing for less. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristin Warman and then after is Catherine Nakbar.
My name is Kristin Warman. I've been teaching English at East since 1993. Thank you very much for the chance to speak tonight. My husband recently tested positive for COVID and I had to quarantine for nine school days. I agree with this need to protect my students and colleagues. But when I learned that each quarantine day would deduct a significant amount from my earned sick leave, I was angry. Often, teachers are unable to provide full lessons when ill on sick days and may assign a study hall. Since the district calls quarantine days "sick days", I felt justified in treating them as such. Why would I do extra work from home while taking such a big financial hit? Administration would not suffer from my protest, but my students would lose nine days of instruction when they were already behind due to the pandemic and my earned sick leave for retirement would still diminish. I could not in good conscience assign nine study hall days and refuse to help my students at the end of the term. So I worked from home in distance learning mode. It's a bitter irony that the district provided a Chromebook for every student so that I could redeem my time spent in quarantine, but penalized me while I did so. I spent hours each day creating lessons, writing subplans, correcting papers, answering student emails, writing college recommendations, recording grades, and communicating with parents and students about grades and makeup work. I never got sick and I tested negative twice. I took sick days while healthy as per the district directive, which would cause my students to fall behind without me there. I tried my best to prevent that by providing Canvas lessons, yet I will pay out of my earned sick leave. I compensated for the directive, but the district has penalized me. Now if I fall ill, I have only one sick day left. The only party that does not sacrifice in this scenario is the district. Yes, it provided substitutes and paid colleagues who covered for me, but would have anyway had I just assigned study halls and not designed lessons. I'm urging you to please consider using ESAR funds to prevent teachers from suffering a significant financial hit during a quarantine to protect others. It's demoralizing. Compensating us only partially would still exploit teachers' good consciences. Please consider full compensation because we do so much for our students and we want quality compensated education to continue when we can't be in the classroom. Thank you so much for your time, your service, and for your consideration.
Catherine Nakbar and after Catherine is Linda Pelto.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for opening up this, off this part of our evening for public comments. I know it's been a while since that's been able to happen. And I truly do thank you for your time and work as students and staff and board members. I have a professional request for you to consider, to really hear the concerns of staff. So much has been added during the pandemic. I'm going to paraphrase an author, Tom Radermacher. He was the 2014 Minnesota Teacher of the Year. He's a classroom teacher and an author. He stated just recently in a post that he shared, "It's absurd to me this year, after last year, after the year before that, that we're doing anything other than healing. This should be a year of simple. This should be a year when every non-essential thing is stripped away and all resources that we can manage are in place for staff and students. All of us are so tired. All of us are doing too much. When everyone is working beyond their capacity already, even a good idea can sometimes be a bad idea. What I need most is help doing the most important part of my job well, which this year means my day should be devoted to the students that I teach." End quote. In recent, having time as an individual to prepare lessons and build positive relationships with students and create engaging curriculum that includes information that maybe hadn't been reviewed last year, time to grade and connect with families occupies much of our time. This year we had to fill out our goals prior to knowing what the district goal would be. My goal was really to attempt to welcome students back to something that feels solid and stable and human. It is unclear that if this is measurable on our teacher development evaluation. As reported by the St. Paul Press, maybe you saw this this weekend, we are all running on empty. We are running on empty. There's an urgency to go back to normal without recognizing that our students and education professionals have lived through this pandemic and we may all have some trauma of our own. A lot of colleagues and educators and staff that I work with have shared their challenges from adjusting to integrating new technology, training opportunities, programming, curriculum modifications due to content gaps, increased mental health needs, a sub shortage. Shout out to our clerical for helping to coordinate all of the sub shortages in our buildings. Tomorrow might be my 20th day covering for a colleague. Meeting the needs of students and absences due to illness and strained labor management, negotiations, and ongoing pandemic uncertainties. It is as though we jumped back into our past experiences without considering our present circumstances. Working with students is by far the best part of my job and educators are committed to doing the very best possible. This is an appeal to all of us to take things off the plates of others and educators and staff and to really listen to our suggestions. Our collective ideas and experience on the front lines can be an asset to problem solving. And I do believe that our labor management structure can support this. Thank you so much for your leadership and time.
Linda Pelto and after Linda is Mary Hubie? I don't, I can't read exactly. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Linda Pelto and thank you for having us here today. I work at Laura MacArthur 4th Grade. And I've been teaching with the district for getting close to 30 years. And we had a staff meeting last week in our building and I just wanted to share with you how, how hard it was to have this staff meeting. It was supposed to be just a regular staff meeting to inform us of things that were going on. And our principal decided to just circle us up and let us all share one great thing that's been going on in our lives and something we're proud of and in our career and then one thing that we're struggling with. And the proud ideas went around and people applauded and hugged and cheered and, and it was a very heartwarming. And then people started going around sharing the concern and we ended up with so many of our young teachers in tears, crying that they are, they don't, they've had hopes and dreams of becoming a teacher and they are now finally able to have their own classroom. And they never knew it would be this hard. And just the struggles of not having support with not knowing how to teach the curriculum, not knowing, just not having enough computers in our classrooms, not having, I mean, the list goes on and on. And, and just not having the support. We have support within our building and within, to help one another. But we have families that are, they have to stay home because their children are sick with COVID and then they have to stay home because they have COVID, even though most of them have been vaccinated and they are using up again all their sick days. And they can't get sick again because they won't have a paycheck if they get sick. And that's weighing on them as well as the contract negotiations. And I just, I just call out to you to know that there's young teachers that are, we're going to lose. They're going to go to other careers if they aren't feeling respected by administration and by the school board, if they're not feeling like they can have the resources to do their jobs well. Thank you.
Mary? And after, after Mary is another Mary. All right.
Mary's coming to one hand, another Mary's coming to one hand.
I wasn't going to speak, but I'm a parent. I'm Mary Hubie. And this is Mary Simonson.
Mary Seemson.
Seemson. And we don't like speaking in public, but we're here. Anyway, we're parents and it's tough. Like everyone's saying, it's a very tough year, very tough. It's been a lot of injuries. We're not feeling the love or respect either. Our, my teachers are great. I'm sure yours is. And we have a great team. But other than that, downtown's not helping us much. We just, we just have a lot, there's been a lot of tears. We would love to just have simple big partitions in our room because our, our, our learning resource room has turned into an EBD room, which is Emotionally Behavioral Disturbed. And even like a setting three, seven, setting four, which means we have students that don't leave all day. And so academics, meanwhile, we've got kids coming in for academics that have to be placed elsewhere. And we've got older tough kids and we've got younger tough kids. And it's like, and yes, we've tried structure. Yes, we try, you know, cards. We're at lunch, we're at recess, we're at math and whatever. If there's a lot of destruction, we need at least dividing boards or more room and we're not getting it. And I don't know what else to say. I just know there's more money. We would like a bigger pay raise and we're having the same issues with not enough subs. We never have subs. It's a joke. We never have subs, it's a joke in the district. We, we are burning out a lot of, obviously I'm older. We're having a lot of new parents that that are thinking of teaching, they're not gonna teach. Student teachers coming and they're like, oh, boy, you know? And so what everybody else said, same, we just need more support. I realize it's a, a district and a maybe a worldwide thing right now, but we just want people to listen to us and come visit us and just sit and like pretend you're listening and I know some of you actually do, you know? And come into our rooms and say, wow, or this is great or this isn't great, you know? That's all, that's all I have to say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for our speakers tonight. We do appreciate, we do listen. We, we, we don't respond typically as a, a school board to individual, but we all have emails and we certainly are free to, to send us your concerns again as well and ask for us to reply as well. So thank you. Next on our agenda is agenda item number eight and it is our report of superintendent. And we actually do hope to that our public stays for our meeting. There's lots of good information and updates, but we also understand you have families and, and, and other things. And these are always live streams, so, or they're, they're recorded. And so you can watch this again tomorrow if you don't watch the whole thing. And then the other part is that our HR committee and finance meeting last week and our committee, the whole meetings are also on our YouTube site on ISD709.org on YouTube. And all of these are recorded and, you know, there's some really good information shared there as well. So thank you. Any other people at the last minute that want to speak? We always do kind of allow that to. Okay, again, thank you so much. So we are now on number eight. Sorry, Superintendent Magus, this is the report of the superintendent. And first we'll go to the students, is that okay, Superintendent?
Sure, and I just wanted to say thank you as well for the members of the public and my apologies to the board and community for not being here. I'm dealing with a significant family issue with a close family member in hospice right now. And so this, under normal circumstances, I would definitely want to be there and I apologize that I wasn't able to hear those comments in, in public in person because it's important that we continue to listen. But very important that we hear from our students. Stella Schutz and Aliya Bartling, if you wanna share your, your reports, it's always good to hear from you.
Well, last Monday, we had our All-Star Soccer Games. That is just, it's two teams, the boys and the girls, composed of all the best senior soccer players in the area. So representing Denfeld was Cameron Hill, Brooke Thompson, Belkow Chowski, Riley Allen, myself, Simon Davidson, Carson Schulthe, Skylar Fossum, Joe Eklund, Adler Warmuth, Lucas Maine, and Conrad Lozaro. Cameron Hill, Annika Wenberg, Alyssa Doyle, and myself all made All-Conference for soccer. Belkow Chowski was an honorable mention. Parker Chastey, Joe Eklund, Adler Warmuth, Skylar Fossum, and Lucas Maine made the boys All-Conference team and Simon Davidson was an honorable mention. Joe Eklund and Conrad Lozaro also made the All-State Soccer Team, which is a really, really big deal. Addison Bartling, which is my sister, made All-Conference for the swim team. The junior rhetorians are working, are working on a grant proposal because every year we get a thousand dollars to on Harvard Town Rotary. And as of right now, we're just kind of brainstorming and trying to figure out what the school needs the most. Dancing at Lunasa, our fall musical was performed, performed this past weekend and the fee to get in was just whatever you could pay, so it was really open to absolutely anybody. A few of our boy athletes wore hot pink and played the boys, or the girls volleyball team last week. It was a free event that all could attend and the boys were coached by senior Carter Kilbright. They did have to reschedule because when they first tried to play, they were in the middle of the game and the fire alarm went off due to some burnt pop card. But they ended up losing, they ended up losing to the girls three to zero. Winter sports practice began this week. The girls basketball team had a whopping forty girls come to tryouts. Last year, we only had ten girls on the team and it ended up being eight at the end. It was, it was a tough season. Next week, boys basketball starts and they have a new coach, Phil Homer, which he seems pretty awesome. I think it's gonna be a great year for them. There was a Veterans Day choir concert in Auditorium, which I'm sure is so good because our choir is always really good. EXEP Board is planning and working on many things right now. They're working on an assembly to introduce winter sports, a hygiene drive for the Hunter Hut, decorating a float for the Christmas City of the North Parade and candy grams. NHS members are working on getting their twelve tutor hours by the end of the semester. Right now, I am an officer and I'm working on getting tutor hours in the elementary schools since finding tutor hours at Denfeld has been scarce without when. Cameron Hill committed to UWS for soccer. Logan Nyland committed to UWS for baseball and Hannah Hobbling committed to UMD for softball. So congratulations to all of them for all their hard work. And overall, I just feel Denfeld's atmosphere has been significantly improved since the last board meeting. It's not perfect, but I'd like to thank the board for keeping us in school and on behalf of all the students and hope we can continue in person for the rest of the school year.
Thank you, thank you. And Stella's excused Superintendent Magus, so thank you, Aliya, for our updates on the great things at Denfeld High School.
Thank you very much. It's great to hear those comments. And just as far as presenting, I know that we were hoping to beam the presentation on here and I'll see if I can, if I can do that. I'm, I'm assuming that I'll be doing it through my own presentation screen here and I'll go forward. And this was uploaded as well to Board Book. But thanks, we wanted to give a safety learning plan. Oops, just one second. This is my superintendent's update and I'm just gonna go through here. Of course, you've seen the five guiding principles that we have. This is a ranking of our current COVID rates. If you see on the side, those are the rankings for each of the, the weekly recordings. We did have a substantial jump from fifty-four point five to sixty-eight point two. But, and if you look at last year's rankings, we were in a very similar place last week and then this, this year last, last, this time last year, we also saw another significant spike there when we went from fifty-four to one oh five. So that's very significant there. It is important to note, though, that the rates in Duluth are probably about twenty, twenty cases per ten thousand lower than many of our areas outside in other St. Louis County areas. So those are, are some positive pieces based on what we've done. But I would also say that based on, and I'm gonna close out of this for just a second because I wanna, wanna speak to this as, as, as well as possible. The I, I just want to say that when we hear about people struggling, we hear about teachers struggling, we hear about students struggling, we hear about parents struggling, clerical, bus drivers, custodians. I couldn't agree more. I believe that, that right now our system is stretched, intact to the maximum and possibly beyond in some ways what, what it can handle. If you read a lot of the national articles, there are school systems that are having to shut down temporarily around some of the holidays or look at going to distance learning, partly because of the struggles we have before us. And I want the board to know as well as the members of our staff and public to know that we are working to address many of the things that were brought forward tonight. And that, that we are in a very different place than we thought we would be this time this year. Because, because we've had, as, as was stated in the, in the words from, from one of our speakers today, we were not necessarily preparing for a third, yet a third year of having to deal with pandemic learning. We were getting ready for it, but the, the state was saying that we need, needed to prepare for full in-person and that's what we're doing and that's what we're moving forward with. But it's gonna take a lot of combined effort and it's also gonna take very, very strong work to create a stop-doing list. I know that there were many things that we had on our, our operational plan that we intended because we wanted to do as much as humanly possible to work with our students as they were returning to us to help them catch up and help them move forward and accelerated learning. But I think we have to also take stock as to what is realistic and what is accomplishable. I've stated many times that, that I only want us to do the most ambitious plan that we can actually complete. And I think it's important for us to take a look at those four priority areas of MTSS for academics, behavior, equity, and our, our blended learning work and look at what can we do to pare that back. There are also some things within my report that I wanna address that are related to teacher pay and use of sick time that I think address some of the things that, that are pressing on our system at this time. So I'm gonna go back into my presentation and continue on. So again, our rates are going up and we have to do what we can to keep them down. There is some positive news, very positive news. From November fourth to November twelfth, as you know, we had our first round of vaccine clinics for five to eleven-year-olds. And during that time, because of the support of our staff, our students, and our administration and our families, we were able to vaccinate more than one thousand six hundred and thirty-five to eleven-year-old students receiving their first dose of vaccines. The second doses will be coming the, after the November holiday, beginning the week of November twenty-ninth for our second round clinics. And those are available there as well as there's a link if you're looking for other vaccine availability for twelve and older or other clinics if you're not able to attend our clinics. Today, we also received from the Department of Health, a share, they shared a letter expressing very serious concern with a rising number of cases in, for COVID nineteen in Minnesota with the schoolchildren that we have. They indicated that it was really important that all schools and all districts really double down on safety layering in the following areas. And I am proud that our district has worked hard to focus on these areas. Promoting vaccines, universal masking, physical distancing, staying home when sick, testing. We have limited contact tracing. We have high, high-quality ventilation systems and we're also working hard to make sure that individuals are notified. This, this month, we also were able, we're hiring a new clerical position to support Crystal, our COVID lead, so that we can increase our ability to notify people safely as well as to consider other layers of safety. Again, we have a need for increased safety precautions. It's important that we stress the importance of student-staff mask wearing. It's also important that we consider revision of our plans for large in-person events. When we're thinking about things like plays and concerts, we, I, I know it's hard for us to, to back off from some of those large in-person events, but we do have to consider the safety elements as we move forward. We are seeing some of the districts in surrounding areas in Wisconsin and, and here in Minnesota having to sometimes move to distance learning for some of their classes. And I think it's important because our primary mission at this time is to make sure that we continue to offer safe in-person learning for our students. By reinforcing, by reinforcing the importance of mask wearing and other safety measures, we can accomplish this goal. So when I said that we were addressing some of the other safety areas, we are increasing our testing. We are ordering antigen testing for our, our staff members so, so that, out of convenience. This was a request that came in today. I mean, there's been, there have been requests that it was something that was brought forward today by one of our bargaining groups. Could we please have testing so it's more convenient for our, our staff? And we are ordering antigen tests so that our staff members, as well as our students, are able to take those tests. Right now, the tests we have from MDE are primarily, primarily focused for, for our students. But it's important we get those, those tests into the hands of our staff so that they can have that extra level of confidence and safety. It's also important, as we, we have noted, we do recognize that when somebody is, is homesick or home taking sick time, that we, we certainly cannot pressure somebody to do additional work. We want to make sure that we're cognizant that people might be ill and they might not need, they might need that time to recover. But we have worked with the teachers' union and we're moving forward with compensation for our, our teachers for up, up to three hours of support. So if somebody's writing lesson plans or providing support for a substitute teacher or correcting papers or whatever it may be, if they're interested, they can do that and they would not be using, they could work for up to three hours a day. And in some cases, there might be situations where people are working more than that. But we don't want that as an expectation of somebody is out sick that they have to. But that's something that we have worked forward with as well. So those are a couple of examples of things that we, we are trying to listen and learn and move forward more responsibly. And I think it's important for us to take a breath and pause and also consider what are some of the other things we can do as we recalibrate, given our new current normal. So with that being said, that's my presentation for today.
Thank you, Superintendent Magus. Are there questions or comments at this time? I just wanna clarify, when we go back to on the slide that says that our second doses are gonna be administered during the week of, of November twenty-ninth, that's not the second shot for the ones that got it two weeks ago. This is just another round of first vaccinations?
No, it's the second round.
Oh, it is the second round. I thought you had to wait a long.
Got it.
Three weeks, oh, that is three, okay.
Three weeks total.
Okay, well, that's good. Okay, thank you for that.
But I especially wanna thank the staff from Laura MacArthur as well as Jim Anderson as principal there. He, he did the first clinic and we learned a lot from, from all the hard work that went in there. There were lines of people and hundreds of people waiting for their vaccines and people coming from all around and there were some things that we, we, the state was able to take, take back and reflect upon. And I think the, the clinics we had the following week ran much more smoothly thanks to the lessons learned there. So hats off to the Laura MacArthur staff as well as the families there and Principal Erickson.
Number left with him.
When you mentioned the one thousand six hundred and thirty doses or kids that were vaccinated, that was in all nine of the elementary schools where the vaccinations happened, right? That included?
So there were nine elementary schools and our two middle schools as well.
Oh, okay, okay, and then?
Because we do hear eleven-year-olds in the middle schools too.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question, you had mentioned about the, the testing that will be available. It'll be both for students as well as us staff. Will students have to get permission from their parents before they have testing done or what? I don't wanna dive too in the details, but I, I actually just had someone ask me that question, so.
Sure, and we, we would still be working out the details. Of course, we wouldn't provide, we would not force anybody to take a medical test without parent, parent permission. So we'll, we'll be sharing more information, but it would be with parent permission. That, that also allows a student to potentially stay in school if they were interested, if the parent and student were interested in doing an antigen test. It would be possible, but the student might not have to quarantine in certain situations. So that's another rationale for wanting to have that testing availability.
And do you anticipate that'll be at all of our sites?
I anticipate it will. We have, we have to take, get a little bit of time to get things up and running. And as you can see, we're, there's still some details to be worked out. But we have pursued some additional state grant money to allow for this. It's also important to note that we continue, we continue with those safety measures of things like mask wearing. And I know that CFO Erickson and our facilities crew, they ordered sixty thousand additional masks last week or so and they're on their way. And we, we have, we have plenty of masks. So I certainly hope that if there, there are schools that are feeling like they need to purchase masks out of their own site money, that's not something that we would want them to have to do. And we also, I was, I was talking with CFO Erickson. If there's a strong interest in having us provide more cloth masks, that would be something else that we could offer, that we'd be willing to, to purchase. But we also, when we're thinking about what is going to encourage a student to wear a mask, we want, we want to make sure that it's something that, that is actually gonna work. In speaking with our principals, they, you know, they all, they're always trying to avoid suspension and things like that if they can avoid it. And so I, I understand that, but there may be situations if somebody is And so I understand that, but there may be situations if somebody is flagrantly not following the rules. I know that there are concerns from staff and others that some of the students are not wearing masks on a regular basis, and we really do need to double down if we want to stay in person.
Member Oswald.
Do we know of the 1,630 vaccinations, how many are actually our students?
I don't have the exact total, but I would say the best, just based on everybody that I talked to when I was in line, I was able to visit almost all of the clinics and almost everybody I talked to was a Duluth parent. There were a few people from other districts that did come, especially on that first day, but I can gather that information for you.
Thank you.
Member Leftwood Kim.
I guess I just wanted to add, you know, I was at that first press event that we had at Laura MacArthur with Principal Erickson and the mayor and public health and Crystal and just everybody. And it was really, you know, again, I'm just really grateful that we were one of three sites that were able to be the first vaccine sites for the ages five to 11-years-old. And so just a great appreciation that we've done the right things to get us there.
Thank you. There's certainly more work to be done, but I was very proud of the work of Duluth. We were, as you said, I think we were perhaps the best attended of the three sites in Minnesota. And we were also, there was some national news coverage and we were in the Washington Post and the LA Times and the Chicago Tribune and several other major news sources because of our forward thinking. And I want to thank the board for their forward work towards the safety of all of our staff, students, and families. It's critical. And once again, reframing back to that, some of those original sentiments, people in education are near a breaking point. I think that it's important that we do what we can to allow people some opportunity to put their own oxygen mask on and think about wellness. And speaking of sneezing, Aaliyah, bless you. But it's important for us to think about wellness, not just physical wellness and physical safety, but also the mental wellness and support of our staff. We're doing quite a bit of work with our work on substitutes to make sure that many, many districts are struggling with substitutes. You might have read a story about the Seattle Times having to close the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving and the, I think it was the Monday after Veterans Day because of a lack of substitutes. Many, many places are struggling in that area, but it's important that we look at things from a very creative, proactive way with things like hiring our floating subs and making sure that there are positions allocated there to enhance safety to the greatest degree possible.
I took my littlest one to the clinic at Piedmont, and it's just anecdotal a lot of it. It was looked mainly to be like, I recognized probably most everybody there, so it was.
I was at the.
Oh, yeah, so it was really good to see everybody. It was just a great confluence of, it felt a little bit like exciting because we've been waiting so long for these littlest ones to get vaccinated, and it really ran very smoothly. So whatever adjustments happened between Laura and Piedmont, it went really well. So I definitely want to thank the district, and we can't forget to give a shout out to the Scholastica nursing students. They were there helping support, so it was great.
Thank you, Member Derek Eater. And I would also say, in addition to thanking the Scholastica nursing staff or nursing students who are amazing and doing their practical hours there, big thanks to the county and state health workers because they supported us from the get-go, and they were also very thrilled with the support there.
Thank you. All pause, okay.
Yes, thank you, John. Superintendent Magus, thank you for your report. I just want a clarification on our support for our teachers while they're absent. You were saying we're offering up three hours of pay per day if they are preparing and participating and providing lessons from home. Is that part of what you were planning to go forward?
Yes. So it's not, basically, it's not using three hours of the sick time. So if you're working on work related to teaching and supporting students, that would be not deducted from sick time. So that's something that we discussed there. We want to make sure that that's rolled out carefully. We did have certain situations where maybe a deaf or hard of hearing teacher, for instance, who is going to be doing vast amounts of synchronous teaching, we might have to look at some of those one-offs for situations where people are working more than that. But if, for instance, if you're, if you were teaching a class and you're at home, but you have a substitute who's actually teaching the class for you, you would be given three hours of, or you would not be using three hours of your sick time if you wanted to and were able to provide support. So it's additional support for that sub, it's additional support for the students. And I also think, talking with our Human Resources Director, Teresa Severance, we talked about how for, to be equitable, we need to look to the beginning of the year and look at people who have already used that sick time. So that if I had that time in September, it's not fair that you get that benefit now that didn't happen in September. So it's important for us to retroactively, to the best of our ability, go back and support there.
Okay, and I thank you for that, and I appreciate what we're doing there, and I hope our staff does too. How did we arrive at three hours versus, say, a half a day, I guess? I certainly would like to see it be a half a day, if we can figure out how to make that work.
Sure. Some people had proposed two hours, some people proposed four hours, and to be quite honest, we said, let's split it in the middle and go with three hours and also take a look at some of those individual circumstances because there will be circumstances where people may need to work more than that three hours or want to work more than that three hours, and we have to think about what that looks like. We also want to make sure that there's enough time to, and again, we're going to retroactively put this in place, but that there's enough time for us to ensure uniformity of this. It can't be that if I'm principal at school A, I can just say, you know, go ahead and charge the three hours and you don't really have to do anything, but at school, you know, school B, somebody's expecting like a log and monitoring computer time or something like that. We want to make sure that there's an equitable, equitable support of our teachers at each of the schools. Our principals always try and do what's best and work really hard for our teachers, and we just want to make sure that we give them the guidance so that they have some standard rollout of this. And we would also make sure that we had conversations continuing with the Federation of Teachers related to what could that look like.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I too just want to support the very interesting and important newer or adjusting to what we have discovered once we're back in this September through November timeframe with, and things like taking things off of teachers' plate. What is, I mean, I'm just assuming that our leaders are going to look at that because that's certainly something we hear, and I know you know. So the board would just like updates when you know, after talking with people, what might be something you do. Same thing with the substitute pay. I think we've heard that that's something you're addressing, so when you've got that, just an update, an email about those things would be great for our, for boards to know exactly where that is going. At least, do I have support of that? Want to know those little updates?
Thank you. We can make sure that at the committee, the whole, at our next meeting, that we're able to provide the board with a more significant update. And we do plan to raise the substitute rate of pay in the very near future. It's important for us as, we're trying to make sure that we have subs and that we're also not burning. You heard, yeah, well, I know we're not supposed to respond to public comment, but teachers are getting burned out as they sub again and again and again. And quite often, it's the same teachers that step up to do it, and it's important that we recognize, how can we bring that forward in a way that's going to get more subs into the system? It's a shortage everywhere, throughout the state, about a third. Most districts have about a third of the subs they had before the pandemic, and subs were an issue even before the pandemic. So to go into something that's an issue and then cut out two-thirds of the labor force that's there, it's important for us to really be thoughtful and also look at those floating subpositions where we, this is, I know people get upset when we roll things out that are brand-new at the board that we haven't had time to share, but we are looking at increasing the number of floating subs that we have as well in the district, as well as making sure those positions are hired for more schools than we have a place at this time.
Superintendent Magus, are all the floating subpositions filled?
They are not.
They're not? Okay, so then what, half of them, I mean, what percentage do you think?
And I'm not sure if Director Severance is there or not, or Mr. Bonds, but it's my understanding that there are very few of the positions that are actually filled at this point because of all the hiring. There are many things that were, positions that were being filled, and that's being prioritized right now for the additional, that needs to be a top priority. And I was kind of surprised to learn that very few or none of the positions had been filled yet.
That's correct. So we do have four allocation, I mean, so we have six FTE positions, and last we checked, we had four applicants. And I know we are discussing the process and will be filling those positions in order.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thank you for your work and attention to that.
Moving along on our agenda, now we're on number eight C. It's the schedule of meetings and events, and just that's in your board book. We have no meetings next week, the week of 22 through 26, so happy Thanksgiving to all of us here, and I hope you have an opportunity to be with family and eat good food. We don't have any meetings the week of November 29th through December 3rd. Our next meeting is December 7th, which is our Committee of the Whole meeting. So take a look at board book for those important dates. So moving to number nine on our agenda, it's Report of Standing Committees, and I'll just, we have two of them. We have Committee of the Whole and we have the HR Finance. So I'm going to turn the Committee of the Whole over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds, and then the Human Resource Finance Committee will be CFO Erickson. So thank you.
Thank you. And this past Committee of the Whole was quite eventful. The board adopted a resolution regarding the application to the Minnesota High School League Foundation. Mrs. Heather Harvick, our Staff Development Coordinator, provided an update regarding our professional development day that took place on October 25th. We also had a presentation provided by our gifted and talented teachers, or our e-square teachers. An update was provided regarding that programming. And then we also had a programming update from our ELL learner programming given by Mrs. Barta, who is our English Department Chair. And that concludes the update of our call.
Any questions?
I just wanted to thank you. I especially enjoyed, it was important to get the updates on the Professional Learning Day, but I especially enjoyed the teachers with the e-square program, and they just did a really wonderful presentation and really appreciated the website they provided, as well as the ELL teacher. That was wonderful to have her. So sometimes we just don't often get some of those kinds of presentations, or we haven't the last few years, and so I really, really appreciated that. So thank you for your work in getting them here, and again, for their presentations, so.
Thank you, and I want to thank them as well.
Any other board comments? Again, just a shout out to our community as well, that Committee of the Whole meeting that was on November, no, what was it on? It was on November 3rd?
That's correct.
That it is on our YouTube site on ISD 709. And again, when you get presentations about staff development days and about the e-square program and all of that, that's really good programming, and it's just really important for our community too to know what types of things we hear about and what's going on in our district. So with that, I will ask CFO Erickson then to go ahead. There are other stuff about, is on the consent agenda when we get there, but CFO Erickson will just highlight a little bit about our HR Finance Committee meeting that was held last week.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to give a brief report on our HR Finance Committee meeting that was held on Tuesday, November 9th. I would encourage folks, if they have the opportunity to watch that, there was some kind of nerdy, exciting enrollment information that we shared, so that would be great. We did have a guest presentation by Cindy Voight from the City of Duluth who came forward to share with us that the City of Duluth will be submitting a Safe Routes to School federal grant again this year. It is, as she shared with us, a highly competitive grant, and so she did share an overview of the sections and areas within the district lines that they are currently putting in as submissions. We had some great dialogue and conversation related to that, and I did want to share that our facilities manager, Dave Spooner, had, has been working with the city for a long time and working through the priority areas within the City of Duluth and areas in which we can provide that information. And while the Safe Routes to School is not the only way that we provide coordination with the City of Duluth, providing areas, this is a great opportunity for the city to collect some extra revenue to help support that. So under the consent agenda, under resolutions, you will see that there is a resolution of support, authorizing the support for this Safe Routes to School application. And we did too, just want to note that while everything that the district sees as some areas in which we can focus on and help support may not be in this grant, doesn't mean we can't work collaboratively to work on addressing some of those areas, and we plan and hope to do that as well. So I'll pause for any questions on Safe Routes to School?
I just wanted to make a point. I appreciated hearing about that, but, and I especially appreciated it because we have a long history of working in this district with the Safe Routes to Schools, and we can thank our former Congressman Oberstark for his work in moving that forward, and many of our schools had already benefited. And way back when I was a parent at another elementary school, we, you know, I was involved on the parent committee. So I just, I guess circling around, we have a great history. I'm looking forward to us continuing our efforts with that particular grad program.
Thank you so much for sharing that. I think it's important to note that this has been a longstanding, and we have seen improvements, and we continue to want to work with the city on more as we can do forward.
Just one thing that you didn't mention that maybe people would be interested in. Somebody had asked about public input into all of this, and Cindy said that will be available, but not until after the grant is awarded. So it's not that that's being ignored, it's just it can't happen until after the grant's awarded.
Correct. Thank you for that reminder. And Cindy and our staff from Duluth Public Schools, from facilities to other administrators over the years, we keep a great dialogue, so I just want folks to know that as other issues and concerns come up, they've been really, really great to work with, so we appreciate that. Moving on to our department reports that we shared during the HR Finance Committee, we had our Human Resources report, Teresa Severance, Director, who is here tonight. This, I think, was her first official committee meeting, so we appreciated her being there, and we got some great information from her. We had our Business Services report. This was where we did do some great dialogue and information related to some enrollment information. Chair of this committee, Member Trinka, had shared with us that there would be some great opportunity to learn a little bit more about what we call the mobility of our students, where they're enrolling from, why they might be leaving the district, and where we see the demographics of where our students are in terms of resident counts versus where they might land within our district and other school districts. So Cattery Little, who is our Mars Coordinator, worked up two reports that are in board book, and also you'll see those as part of the presentation if you watch the video. Great, great information, and really enjoyed the conversation and the dialogue that we had about that so that we can continue that. And I believe what we feel came out of that was probably an opportunity to dig even a little bit deeper and to be sharing a little bit more, and I wasn't shy about how excited I was to share this with our committee. Um, and I wasn't shy about how excited I was to share this with our committee members and others, um so we would continue to appreciate feedback from the board and others in ways we can provide more enrollment information that. These statistical things are really important and one of the things that you know that I share with you as part of the ongoing education that we've provided uh for the past three years here as part of our. Uh, business services educational portion is that those student enrollments are the foundation of our budget and so it is so important for us to learn and understand. And appreciate what those student counts mean to us, how we look at the history, but then also how we trend into the future, because that is very critical for us. Um, not only to understand where we've come, but how we're going to project and plan for our future school years as well, so um it was a really. Uh, great opportunity for us and, and actually we hope to continue to engage, um I talked with uh Chair Lowfald about maybe as a future topic at a committee of the whole meeting. Where then we could even present some so that, you know, all board members could participate in that as well, so um we would be very open to sharing that. I'll pause really quickly if anyone had.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say that same thing, I, I, I would really appreciate it, our committee of the all, um. For all the different reasons that these numbers are important for us to know.
Thank you.
And here.
Uh, we also received um our departmental reports, um we had our facilities report from Dave Spooner, um we also had our monthly enrollment report, which then triggered just to look at this year. The information we shared under the education finance was really a review of fiscal year twenty-one, which we had just finished, um but just wanted to share with folks that we continue to see. Some recovery of our students from uh fiscal year twenty-one, which was what, you know, our pandemic year, but we have not fully recovered, so I just want the board and. And folks to be aware that we still are below our targeted um amounts of students. This is all, also the time of year, the month of December, where we will provide the Department of Education a revised update on what we think our projected student counts will be. And we needed to be realistic that our trend at the beginning of the year is probably a little high, so we're probably going to be coming to the board in December. Uh, recommending a lower projected enrollment, final enrollment for this school year, so we will be bringing that forward in December. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't recover and we'll always get what the actual student counts are, but we feel that based on what we see now. That the recovery of students that we had hoped to see wasn't as much as, as, as what we're seeing right now, so we will most likely be projecting a lower uh projected enrollment for this uh coming year.
Um, CFO, can you just quickly for those, just give me the, what is our, what have we, what did we go pre-pandemic and what are we at now?
So the end of fiscal year twenty, we were at approximately three, eight thousand three hundred and seventy students in this past.
Twenty, did you say?
That was fiscal year twenty, so June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Okay.
When we went into the pandemic, uh for fiscal year twenty-one, that finished June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, we were just shy, uh we were in the seventy-eight hundreds, I'm sorry, I don't know the last two digits, but. Around seventy-eight hundred, right now we're at about seventy-nine sixty and we had projected eighty-one eighty um back in June when we did our budget, so we had hoped that. We would see a recovery of about eighty, eighty-one hundred and eighty, and these are ADM, so these are not head counts, I just want us to remember that that's that. Um, enrollment figure, um that gets us to um what those uh generating that general education revenue would be. So I don't know for sure, we're going to be meeting as a finance team uh the next week to determine what that final estimate that we'll bring forward in December will be.
Thank you.
Uh, we continued uh also to get our child nutrition report, um again, just sharing with you that we continue to see some supply chain issues um in terms of getting food delivery. Um, this is a national issue, this is not just a Duluth Public Schools issue, uh but we are um. Continuing to see that we have to do some modifications and adjustments to some of our menus based on uh what kind of inventory of food supplies we can get in uh to our buildings. Um, we also again gave a gentle reminder about the application for benefits or the free and reduced lunch uh applications as we um sometimes call them. Um, we are still being able to accept uh free and reduced application or application for benefit enrollments uh through December fifteenth. So families, even though we have um free full lunches again this year from the USDA, um filling out that application based on income, if you do qualify. Does uh provide ISD seven oh nine with several revenue opportunities, uh the most direct one being that compensatory uh revenue. Um, we are down again uh for this school year that we're in, we lost approximately one point four million dollars in revenue compared to fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, again, uh because we saw a lower uh free and reduced lunch count approved application, so um and I do want to say. That our buildings, our staff members, our teachers and others have done an outstanding job of outreach, so I want folks to know that. We are seeing folks participating and trying to do that, but we feel like it's never too much to say it one more time as a reminder to folks, so. Um, if we can, um, you know, continue to encourage and, and offer, offer that, it can be done online, it can be done on our district website and we can, we also have paper forms available. Um, if people feel more comfortable filling it out by paper, so again, it is a income-based program, so we, we know that, you know, this isn't something that every. Student in the district would qualify for, but if you read the, the outline of what qualifies and, and you know that you're a family that could qualify, we would really appreciate that application.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
Okay, so between, so we lost one point four million in compensatory revenue and we don't know what our compensatory revenue will be for this year yet.
That is actually this year's revenue.
Okay, so that's, okay, got it, so we lost one point four million in compensatory revenue and then if we revise our student count down by roughly a hundred and twenty students. What does that look like in terms of adjustment of budget, like what does that all mean?
Yeah, so part of our budget conversations this year was the utilization of ESER funds to supplement, so right now we'd be doing ESER adjustments. Um, to make sure that we are maintaining what we have, so we would not be doing any um budget um reductions at this point, we would be supplementing with those ESER dollars as part of the. Budget commitment we made in June.
And then has there any, been any conversation either, and I don't know how the, these funding streams exactly work between state and national that since the USDA has been covering school lunch for a while? How, is there any, are they thinking about calculating compensatory revenue differently if they can't get, because the data that they use is through free and reduced lunch?
Thank you for that question, um I believe that um educational associations and organizations are going to be bringing that forward this year as a legislative uh topic of conversation. Uh, we do believe that for the most part, we are seeing that the utilization of those counts and the generation of this revenue has had a negative effect on most districts. But it hasn't had it on all districts, so there could be some hesitation of just changing the calculation, but I think if there was a modification of how. Uh, that local, because compensatory revenue is a state allocation, but they use a federal guideline to make that accounting, so um would certainly um. Encourage um reading from our different organizations such as MSBA, MASA and others, um AMSD, um who may be providing um. Guidance on that because we are seeing that as a loss of revenue.
Okay, and then last question, has there been conversations, is, is there any idea right now with the USDA still providing um lunch to all students, if that is going to be a continuing? Or is that, we don't, we just don't know, that's sort of a mystery right now?
Right, we do not know that at this time, um I think uh we will continue to be watching it on a federal level, I think it will be. Um, probably watching the nationwide statistics because this is a nationwide um situation right now, um. It is hard to tell where their funding is coming from, so that's one of the issues and concerns I think that they have as well, they have um stabilized funding in order to then reallocate that out to the states.
Thank you CFO Erickson.
Thank you for those great questions, um we also did share a transportation department report, um we continue to um. Uh, we are able to continue to provide full transportation services to our students, but as we have shared uh since the summer, we continue to see some. Uh, challenges in maintaining um uh drivers and opportunities for all of our routes, um we are doing uh spectacular work, we are so appreciative of the work of Steve Johnson, our, our. Transportation manager and his team, um and our routers especially, we're, we're getting awfully creative in some of our routes and. Uh, making sure that um we're maximizing both our, our drivers and our capacity and then also trying to meet the best uh needs of our students. Also, our partners at Voyage or Bus have been great in terms of helping us collaborate since they do um a, a pretty significant portion of our transportation as well. Um, but again, we continue to um look at ways to make sure that in the cases of, if we continue to see a potential shortage, that we may have to look at alternate. Uh, routes and alternate schedules during the day, um we have been seeing and hearing that um there have been districts who have had to cancel school. Um, because they didn't have enough drivers for the day, um those were, you know, relatively small districts with a small number of routes, but. Losing two people was fifty percent of their, their folks and so that, that is a, a big challenge for us, but um just really appreciating the work of our staff and. You know, we, we say often that um our, you may see our transportation manager driving a bus because oftentimes we have.
Yeah.
That need and, and um besides just what we have happening, we have our normal uh people being sick and people taking vacation and people needing time off and so. Balancing all of that has, has been um a challenge and, and I think um all of our teams have risen to that challenge the best that they can, so we appreciate that. Any other questions on our department reports? We do have a list of items on the consent agenda and I will just uh say that these are all coming forward as recommendations from uh different departments and different areas. Um, I will pause if anyone has any questions other than that we would provide uh support for these areas uh under the consent agenda.
I just want to encourage again our community to listen to this meeting, I think it was two hours and twenty minutes, so it's not, it's not, wasn't too, too ungodly long. Um, I just want to highlight too, because I know that we had some public comment a little bit on this too and that. You know, we have, I, I am appreciative of the work that all of you have done to hire what we've needed to hire, whether that's deans of students. Or whether that is administrative support um at your district service office, the human resource manager position, I think you are looking at someone in the Simone's area to. Support finances and frontline, Skyward, Skyward system, but we also had twenty-nine um. Teacher positions paid by your ESER, that report that was on your HR, I just want um to thank, to thank the team for looking at. At, at giving us this information so that we can respond to, you know, a community that wonders up, up, you know, if we're adding classroom teachers as well and. We had a conversation the other night too about helping out the music program um with lessons and, and adding and using your ESER monies to support that, so. Thank you very much um with, with that, and any other? Questions to CFO Erickson on this two hour and twenty minute? The, the other thing that CFO Erickson, and, and I'm glad you don't go into this and is, you, you should listen to it because there is about. I'd say a good half hour where um CFO Erickson shared where the ESER dollars are going, whether that's technology purchases or whether that was. Not just the, the HR, but there was the list of um HR finance wanted to have that information about. Where are we currently at with the spending of our monies and, and I, are, are you planning to, to give that to us in a document, I know it was verbal?
It was and, and thank you for that reminder, um we've been working as a team to make sure that we are, we've had so much activity that we wanted to make sure we had a holistic report. And we've been working as a, as a leadership team and, and a cabinet team to make sure that we're identifying all those things and we'll be providing that as an updated summary report.
I think you said last week that you had a meeting last Friday that was going to solidify some of the things too, but um thank you for the work though, even if, it was a verbal report and I'm not asking that, I, I think I need it, we can all listen to it too, but. Um, it was just really a, a great uh celebration, you're, you know, we, we, we have, we have been the benefit of some, of some dollars because of COVID and. Um, I appreciate the hard work, you're going to figure out where those dollars need to go, like with, I think you said you had to purchase eleven hundred new devices. And um, you know, I want our community to know that, that we, we are feeling that need, I think, you know, if there's some random places that still are in need, I, I think they just need to, you know. We need to support them and reach, and they need to reach out and let us know that too, so, any other questions?
Just a comment if, if I could?
You can.
Uh, no, I just want to say thanks to the team as well and thanks to Kathy and um. Teresa Severance as well from Human Resources, but as you mentioned, uh Jill, we did spend some time on, on Friday assessing uh some of our, our current. COVID spending related to the ESER and the other, the other federal uh expenditure areas and that's part of where we decided, let's, let's uh increase the number of our floating subs. But that's, that's not the only thing that we've increased, we've added um right there at Denfeld, we've added uh deans of students, a couple of dean of students positions to support with some of the. Behavioral and social emotional challenges that are coming forward and I've also heard from our social workers related to mental health and several other groups and it's important for us as we. Continue to assess how, how should the district and board and community spend those additional dollars? I think it's important that we take diverse input in doing so and we realize that it is, it is a finite pot, that, that uh. We weren't anticipating the needs that we, the full range of needs that we have this year, uh but it's important to realize that we may very well have some significant needs next year too. And making sure that we're uh very careful about those expenditures while also making sure that we have things like plenty of masks, plenty of. Supports for social emotional learning needs, those are all very, very important, so I appreciate uh the work being done there.
Seeing no other hands, thank you, thanks CFO Erickson. We are going to move to number ten on our agenda, it's the consent agenda and if you look at that, it's a pretty straightforward, we've got approval of minutes and. Approval of some action items, things that were gone over in our call meeting and our um committee reports. And by approving our committee reports when we, on this consent agenda, you know, we acknowledge and approve all the information and action items represented in that um for tonight and. I'm looking for a motion to accept our consent agenda.
I move.
Second.
There's a, a motion by Member Lachlan Kemp and a second by Clerk Oswald to accept our consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting our consent agenda tonight, say aye.
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 Opposed? Our motion carries with our consent agenda. Okay. Now we have a special, number eleven, a special resolution, SP dash eleven dash twenty-one dash thirty-eight fifty-three, it is for our. Um, I got it right here, this designation of identified official with authority for the MDE external user access recertification system. Whereas the Minnesota Department of Education MDE professional education licensing standards record, the Pelsby and Office of Higher Education, O H E. Require annual designation of an identified official with authority for each local educational agency, the uses. That uses the Educational Identity and Access Management System and whereas the Iowa is responsible for authorizing, reviewing. And recertifying user access for those local education agency in accordance with the State of Minnesota Enterprise Identity and Access Management Standard. Which states that all user access rights to Minnesota state systems must be received and recertified at least annually. And whereas the Iowa will authorize user access to State of Minnesota Education Secure Systems in accordance with the user's assigned job duties. And will revoke the user's access when it is no longer needed to perform their job duties, so now therefore be it resolved. Superintendent recommends the board authorize Cheryl, Cheryl Williams to act as the identified official with authority. For the Head Start organization, Duluth Head Start and Duluth Head Start School of Readiness. That's the resolution, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
And a member eater makes the motion, Member Lachlan Kemp seconds, all those in favor of moving resol- resolution. SP dash eleven dash twenty-one dash thirty-eight fifty-three, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So now that brings us to number twelve and that's questions and other, and again, I just want to highlight that I gave a, a handout for land acknowledgement that I think. We could put on our call agenda meeting in December or, and, and, and see where that goes, questions?
I support that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other announcements?
Yes.
Member Lachlan Kemp?
Yep, I, I was just looking it up here, uh so I, I think, you know, one of the uh committees I serve on as a school board liaison is the Head Start. Uh, Parent Advisory Committee and so next week, uh Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, uh will be an open house through the Playscape program, uh Playscape. Places that they've been working on and we had a report on a, a few months. And we had a report on a few months back by Sherri Williams and some of the parents that are on that committee. But so Monday, the 22nd, at Myers Wilkins, Tuesday, the 23rd, at Piedmont, and Wednesday, the 24th, at Laura MacArthur. Every day from 10:15 to 11:00 will be their open house. And there'll be some snacks and stuff. It'll be outside, of course, when the kids are out there playing as well. So welcome Board members to go to any of those sites or all three, if you want. Hot chocolate or, I don't know, they were still deciding hot chocolate or apple cider. But, and the parents on the Parent Advisory Committee were just, are really excited about this vision that they had finally happening. And a big shout out to David Spooner. I know our facility director did a lot of work on the planning around those playscapes as well. So this is exciting, exciting.
And they're darling. Yes, Piedmont's is darling.
So outdoor play areas, they're not playgrounds.
Yeah.
We had a whole great explanation on the difference between playscape and playgrounds. But I'm really excited about this, because I know there's just really a movement across school districts around the country on creating these playscapes as well. So come if you can.
I just want to go back too, because I know I talked with Assistant Superintendent about the indigenous land acknowledgement. And it, it probably would be best given to the policy committee. Yes, to, to do that or, you know, do, I don't know. It's not a policy, is it, Member Lachlan?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, yeah.
Okay.
I think it can start in the committee of the whole. And if we feel after that discussion, it needs to go to policy?
Yeah, that allows for a lot of dialogue and conversation.
Yeah.
And would it be appropriate to reach out to our advisory, our, our Native American Parent Advisory and Vanisakoi to, to maybe help us through this?
Absolutely. I, I will connect with them to see how we can co-construct that.
Because I would think that one of the things I learned in my research is that we, we should reach out to our local, you know, school district, you know, team, because they can craft a language that's really specific to Duluth schools and not just some land acknowledgement that somebody, some other district uses. So I, I did learn a lot.
Also Nate Smith, you know, definitely.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah.
I, I also think as well that reaching out to our local tribes too would be part of that process. And I'm sure that our, our American Indian education group, as well as Nate Smith from, from Office of Educational Equity and others, that, that we would make sure that we have meaningful, meaningful conversations there. And I, I thank you Chair Lowfald for some of the research you did to make sure that it's not just a tokenistic, you know, land acquisition, that we're really engaging in dialogue with, with the sovereign nations that have been here before us.
And, and thinking that through too, I, I don't want to rush the process either. I think I said something like we could, you know, maybe start it in January. Well, I don't, I don't want to rush our, our, our using, our community and our tribe and the people that want to contribute. So just whenever it feels right, it will be a good, a good addition. I'd be, I'd be honored if we would consider to work on that, so.
Sounds good.
Okay. Seeing no other information, it is.
Paul.
Oh, Paul.
Thank you Chair Lowfald. I just want to thank Bart Holden, Patty, the entire technology team for keeping me connected with the Board and all of our meetings the past three months. It's been a long time. I'm looking forward to returning to the States and, and, and being with all of you in the boardroom next month. And I, I thank my fellow board members for their patience and, and support while I've been here in Ireland supporting my wife. So again, thank you everybody.
See you when you get back.
Thanks, Paul.
I, I do too want to say to our technology team that they really do do a nice job too. You guys are very clear, easy to hear, not a lot of glitches. So it's been really a, a great opportunity for us to know that we, we could all be in this position at some point. And we, we want to honor that school board work is, we've got a lot of meetings. And so if we can make it work a different way, it's great. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Oh, no, don't do that yet. It's moved, I'm looking for a second?
Second?
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. No. We are adjourned.